Oh, call the meeting to order. I'd make a motion to adopt the agenda as well.
Kentai.
Aye.
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 Aye. Uh, delegation.
Delegation.
No delegation?
Nope.
Uh, consent agenda, minutes, correspondence?
We have one correspondence. This is from, uh, the Gooch family. Just a thank you from, uh, Don Wilkins and the Gooch family. Thank you for your kindness and remembering mom with your donation, your thoughtfulness and generosity. You're much appreciated. Mom, love coming to us each for games, performances and advance everybody who is so nice to her. Don Wilkins and the Gooch family.
Treasurer's report.
Okay, move on back. Treasurer's report, first page. You notice, uh, on the general fund, we did get some substantial state money on January seventh, four hundred two thousand three seventy-five. Supplemental general, we got county money, um, LOB two eighty-two, nine fifty-four. One one twenty-one. Also got some capital outlay, uh, money from the county. That's hundred and fifteen thousand eighty-seven. You notice, uh, that balance is correct at the bottom with no outstanding, uh, bills. Food service, uh, we got some money from the state, sixty-six thousand nine oh-nine. And then we had some capers flow through. If you go over the capers section, second from the end, we hundred and fifty thousand four hundred and sixty-seven. That bounces in and bounces out. And then on the backside, got some bond and interest money from the county, two hundred and six thousand eight thirty-two. Had some gifts and grants. That's our four-year-old grant money. And some title money. Um, petty cash, need twenty dollars for the middle school, twelve twenty for the high school and twenty-five dollars for the superintendent's office. On the bills, literally really nothing to talk about on the bills at all unless you have a question. Um, I am, the only thing I do want to hit on is on, on, there was on, on the bottom of page two, uh, there's some live stream. That was Esser money installation for the, that would have been for the, uh, cameras, the new, the, in the gyms. And then on page three, the only thing that I saw that, uh, is interest is the, uh, interest on the two thousand twelve B bonds, that payment. And just a note on that, we get majority of that money back in a reimbursement. In fact, we just got one, didn't we? We got a late one. Should've had one.
September's back just, uh, last week.
Yeah, the IRS is way behind on that, so.
So we'll probably get another check here, uh, in the next four weeks for March.
We'll get the majority of that ninety-two thousand dollars back. Anyhow, addendums. On the general, general fund, sitting with about fifty-seven percent of the budget remaining. We haven't had our audit yet, um, so that can, that, remember, that number will probably change some. Then, on the LOB, we have about seventy-eight point three eight percent of the budget remaining. If we saw anything else on those bills that you have a question on, I'd be happy to ask but answer that, but I didn't see much of anything this month.
I'd make a motion, we adopt the minutes of the regular board meeting of January thirteenth, two thousand twenty-one. The treasurer, to per the treasurer's report of January thirty-first, two thousand twenty-one. To replace the petty cash, uh, middle school for twenty dollars, high school for twelve twenty, superintendent's office twenty-five dollars. And payment of the bills in the amount of one hundred and seventy-five thousand six hundred and ninety-eight dollars and ninety-three cents for February tenth, two thousand twenty-one. And January payroll in the amount of four hundred and thirty-nine thousand three hundred and twenty-five dollars and forty-two cents.
Kentai.
Aye.
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 Aye. Old business, Homewood Gym and Check.
Okay, the HVAC project slated for this summer, we got our bids back, uh, from Samco, PCI and McElroy's. McElroy's had the low bid of one ninety-four, eight thirty-seven. Again, that, I'm really hoping that this HVAC project seems to fit ideally with the Esser two money. But, uh, you, we do have to write a plan for how we're gonna spend that money. I haven't seen how they are expecting that to be done. I fully expect this to be, um, approved in that. But again, it's gotta go through that plan and be approved. So I did get a letter from, just so you know, a letter from, uh, Wade Juneman that talks about, in, in, one of the things they kept telling me, as long as the HVAC project improves your air quality or airflow or both, that it should qualify for that Esser two funding. And I got a letter from him stating both of those things, if, if needed. So, um, I would, uh, recommend approving this bid so they could get ready to s- get things ordered and get things done this summer.
I'd make a motion to approve the low bid in the amount of one hundred and ninety-four thousand eight hundred and thirty-seven dollars from McElroy's on the Homewood HVAC project. Secretary?
Aye.
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 Aye. Your business.
Okay, I had, when, we've been talking about bleachers a little bit and I had three staff members come and talk to me, um, with, uh, I guess, I don't wanna call it a concern, but they just were thinking about future improvements to the facility and wondering if we put new bleachers in now, if that would possibly impair or impede a plan down the road of expanding or improve. I think their, the plan that they talked about was to demolish the, um, the locker rooms, move them around to the side and expand the gym to the south and add bleachers that way. So, um, and, and they talked also about some artificial turf on the football field as possible planning, uh, area. So, uh, when I visited with them, and I think Mr. Heward was with me too, we visited with them and didn't feel like doing bleachers right now would be detrimental to anything that might happen down the road. But I didn't know that for sure, 'cause it really, it really depends on what the scope of a project would be. I can't answer that question outright. But I did, um, this, this piece of paper right here, I talked to Brad Peterson today and Brad Peterson is with Heartland Seating, and he just drew this up for me as a, just to kinda show what, that it probably would not impede with a project like that, if you, you know. On the top right-hand, uh, corner, it says new bleachers would not change with growth in the gym. So if you, if you added bleachers to one side of the gym on the south side like that where the locker rooms are, you still have to have exits on all four corners based on the number. So you can't really keep going with the bleachers, like the, uh, home side bleachers can't go any further than they already do to speak of. And when you have to have those exits, you have to leave those gaps. But you could pro- he, he, and I, that, I'm gonna say that that thirty feet wide is just a guess. You know, we didn't know. I didn't know. But he did this really quickly for me. But that's kinda, he just says growing the gym to the south will not increase the lengths of the two sides. Needs to maintain egress at corners and as the east and west bleachers grow, they would become obstructed by the side of the new bleachers. And so that's his kinda, I think, shows that if you did do bleachers in the near future, it, it would not probably impact anything that you would do in the future. As long as it's in that scope of work, I don't know.
It could be its own set of bleachers, not that it has to connect with the others. There shouldn't be any problems there.
I wouldn't think it would con- I don't think it could connect.
Yeah, that's what it looks like. This was helpful.
Yeah, I don't think it could connect because of the exits that you have to have for fire code. So, and then I, you know, just talked about some other things. I mean, at some point, you know, we can talk, I think the board needs to decide when we wanna start talking about planning for the future. Uh, this bond issue rolls off in nine years or so, in two thousand thirty. But that, to do a bond issue require, like, our last one took seven years or, I think it was seven years.
Five years to do the, before you started, starts.
Yeah, it takes, it takes a lot of planning. The first thing you need to do is hire an architect and get them involved with that planning. And so it's, it's a lengthy deal. I, I don't know if, Mike, you're part of that, I think.
On after- afterwards, I was on like the vote, you know, the vote committee.
No, nobody in here was a part of that, but I did get some clarification just so you guys could see from Craig Noon's wonder how that process goes. It's, it's a lengthy process. It's a planning process. Lots of, uh, input from lots of stakeholders, um, so.
And what all you wanna put in it if you decide to do other things, 'cause they're in my notes and they've got the turf on here or something.
The two items that men- were mentioned as of real high interest to these three individuals at least were artificial turf and expanding some seating in the gym so that we could host substate tournaments. And that was the other thing. Our, our, when we, uh, and we'll get to the bleachers here in a minute, but you can see what the capacity would be, um. You'd have to add the three eighty to that nine ninety-two to get the actual, it'd be like thirteen some. But, um, we have hosted substates before, but it is not a good, we broke fire code, I would say. We will actually lose some seating with new seating because of ADA accessibility. That's just a given. But the actual numbers that they want you to have, they recommend that you have, but I don't, a lot of times they don't have it. It's two thousand to twenty-five hundred for hosting a three A-sized tournament for substate. So, I don't know. You guys have any, you have anything to add? Just ADs. I just wanted you to have that information that I got today, um, from, from Brad on that. I don't, any other discussion? That's up to the board when we do it, but I think one thing about passing a bond issue, you know the timing has got to be right, the money has got to be right, and the package that you're selling has got to be right. Or, and I, and I express my concerns that, and I know Mr. Heward and I did too. When you pass a bond issue, you gotta, it's gotta be, you've got to be able to get, um, support on that. And I, I don't know, that's up to the public what will be supported. So you wanna make sure that, in my opinion, you don't wanna go out and sell, try to, and get something that fails because then it's hard to get one down the road. We've been really, I think the.
It took a lot of people, a lot of time campaigning for the last one.
It's a lot of work. It's a lot of work and it takes a lot of organizational meetings and I think.
That's gonna be my question. Did you have public forums and everything?
Oh, gosh, yeah. It was a.
A lot of public info.
It was a lot.
Plus people have to go through the voting. Or maybe you're undertaking, but a lot of people.
Architects helped us organize that, bond issue and the bond campaign and all that. It's a, it's a major deal. Like I said, I don't know what the right timing is on that anymore than anybody else knows.
Would it be bad timing, um, considering everything that's going on? We don't, a lot of uncertainties with this virus and everything else going on.
That sure wouldn't hurt, help anything right now. I don't know. COVID and everything else is, I mean.
Outside of, um.
I don't know when the right time to start that process is, 'cause you just don't know how long it's gonna take. I think if we, if it were up to those three individuals to talk to me, we'd start tomorrow, you know, but.
I agree that we need to be thoughtful and it's the public and everyone, all of the parties agree that it's something we wanna do. When it comes to, um, the turf, I just have a question.
Mm-hmm.
How, I guess, I don't know, I could go out of muck, but how much do we spend on leveling and seating and versus how much, versus a bond issue? I'm just curious. That's just one thing. I was curious.
It's not, it wouldn't, it's a fraction.
It's like twenty-five thousand a year.
We don't, we probably spent.
I don't know how much annually we spend.
Since we, since we started with, uh, Midwest laser leveling, we probably have spent maybe fifteen to twenty thousand a year.
A year.
And, and that's on the high side. You know, we do water it, we do. It's still.
I'm just curious.
I don't, I don't ever, I have never really added all of that expense up, but it wouldn't be, you wouldn't touch.
I'm just curious.
I think you're probably, you guys, have you heard any numbers on?
Council grows.
Million? I don't know. I really don't. I don't wanna throw out a number, 'cause I don't.
The two football fields, the Rossville, St. Mary's, two point five, but that was a complete track in football from ground up, so.
I really, I would hate to throw a number, 'cause I don't know for sure. It's pretty substantial. They are, they are getting, current turf fields are getting more prevalent here, man. How they're financing them, they're all different.
At one time, I thought we did build this, but we didn't figure, wanted to accomplish.
We, we talked about, we did talk about some project, potential projects, one of those being the Ag building. Um, we've, we've thrown out different ideas. I don't know if they were really, I don't know if I'd consider them goals that we had down as, uh, listed items, but that's what, all of that stuff would come into play on a planning process on needs of the district. You, we'd have to get the input of a lot of stakeholders, teachers, uh, everybody, board.
We're right at the time where we ought to be forming a planning committee to, to research what we can do. Yeah, we get good with it, just a little bit of progress.
It does take some time. I don't know.
I would agree.
I'm not exactly sure, I mean, when to, in, when to involve an architect with that. I know, you know, or, or you just.
You don't have to wait till you knew what you wanted to do.
You could, you could do some needs assessments and see what people think, you know? That's something that you could start.
Well, I think you and I have talked about before, a lot of districts have like strategic planning board meetings that just focus on that, that you can gather that input from, you know? I mean, I don't, I don't know when the right time for a bond or not a bond, or even if it's a capital outlay project planning session. But if you don't, if you just put it to the wayside right now, you won't get anything done by twenty, what was it, twenty thirty when the bonds expire? And that, I mean, to me, that would be the worst thing, would be to let those expire without having something in place, whether it's more classrooms or anything down the road.
Yeah, I mean, I'd be very open to, when you can even bring somebody in to lead you through a strategic planning process. It's probably better to do that, honestly.
Sounds great.
Uh, I don't, you just let me know when you're, it probably needs to be separate than a board meeting.
Oh, I think so.
'Cause it take, that'll take a whole evening and cost some probably.
We get through the school year, we probably went out with the middle of summer or something.
I don't, I think that gets us past it, we know what kind of what we'll do with pandemic and whatever.
Sure.
Have a little better idea.
You bet, we will.
That sounds good.
I'll do some research and see who we can, if we can find somebody to help us with that.
So that brings us to the gym bleachers.
So, with that being said, I do have the bid back, and that's what, and I really wanted you to have access to the whole thing so that you can see exactly what this looks like, 'cause if you have any input on this, it's probably not too late to change it, but, so the second page, the first page, hundred and eighty-nine thousand, two eighty for the, the materials and inst- installation. We added a platform for the drum set and a, and a platform for, um, the live AV people up on our side, those are kinda pricey, and he told us they were, but if you look up at our platforms, they're pretty hokey looking. So if we're gonna get new bleachers, my recommendation would make it look good, not put a two by four thing up there.
Agreed.
Um.
Safe, so we don't have reliability.
Yeah, and it's got, it will have a railing around it, um, I believe.
Yes, it does.
Um, I know Rossville's did last night, 'cause I noticed it over there.
He said.
Asset next to it is pretty hokey still though.
Yeah. Um, but then on the removal, then, uh, he did say we would be able to auction, or we could do whatever we wanted with the lumber that's in there, we could sell that, uh, we could put it out for bid and sell it, and I think the iron, the iron we could get for scrap, they don't haul that away, they'll put it in the dumpster, and we can take it out and get, recycle for it, so that would get a little bit of that down, I don't know how much. If you turn the page, it talks about the seats, you have, uh, thirteen rows on the big side, coverback seats on most of the home side, not all of it, I'll tell you why. We did not put that, that seat backs on the visitor's side.
Well, this, this changes our aisle ways going up and down?
Uh, it should.
The one.
Which one?
The closest to the cafeteria side.
Yes, there's no aisle, there's no, if you hold it up like this, you see.
No aisle by the wall.
There'd be no aisle there, but there'd be an aisle. And I, I think that you just don't really have a lot of choice, that's all code now, and so you can't, but you'll notice where the darker s- seats are, that's seat backs. We, the, the reason you don't wanna put seat backs over where the kids sit, if they stand on them, they will break, you know, you'll break them off. So we came about halfway over on that section and stopped with the seat backs on the home side.
Oh, okay, there's the aisle, okay, I see that.
It's, it's kind of a, it's about a section and then a half of another section without seat backs over there.
The seat backs would really be in, in the way of the band as well, I mean, it wouldn't be a good thing.
Yeah, that makes sense.
And then you see the platforms at the top. Then.
These backs fold down as you push them in on their own.
So they're like the, like, branded ones?
Yes.
They fold down from here?
Yeah, on the.
They're always up, but they.
On the third, on the back of the third page, it shows how they fold each one right there.
Oh.
Yeah.
They.
Yep.
Know anybody that has these bleachers? We sit on.
We sit on a lot of bleachers and.
Well, one thing I, the one thing we did talk to him about, and I know Tim and Tony were in there when he was there, I said, I don't want these to be so tight that people can't, can't sit with their feet legs out, you know, I don't know if any of, I don't wanna say too much negative, but council groves are so tight that you can't sit in them, I don't know if you've ever sat on the home side, very uncomfortable. These have thirty, thirty inch, um, about thirty inches for your legs, which he said is what we have now, did he say that's what we have now?
What we have now.
It's what we have now, and I think that's what Lyndon has, probably, 'cause theirs were not uncomfortable, I didn't think.
Wes Franklin's were good, Chase County.
Uh, they're just, I think that's what Wes Franklin, he said that to me on the phone.
They were good, Chase County is not.
You sat in the first one Franklin once?
Yeah.
Those, those were.
These aren't the Silver Lake ones, I have never sat in something so uncomfortable, sorry, Silver Lake.
No. Those are, I don't know, those seemed really wide.
It was, the seat was a odd, I don't know.
On through, yeah, tucked down in.
I had, yeah.
So, the visitor's side is five rows, and, and, uh, we had to put, because of our, where we put our, uh, scoreboard, uh, you, you had to put two aisles right beside that, his original plan had one right in the middle, well, that, that's where our scores table goes, so you can't do it that way. So you're gonna lose a few seats like that, but.
Will that, um, the, uh, the table itself that comes out, will it?
It sits.
Get underneath?
It would.
Like it, like it does?
Yeah.
It would go back?
You'll, you'll have to say clearance under, on the, underneath the, you understand what I'm talking about?
Yeah, I hope so, I didn't really ask him that.
Those feet go under the current bleachers right now, and that pushes that table against, right up against it, so it's tight.
That's something I have to check, check with him, we didn't even think about that, he saw it, I showed it to him.
Because I don't. Well, I know, be, like, the current ones, they had to, like, cut a little compartment to where it opens to get those legs into, uh, so you might.
That's a good point, I never.
You might double check that with, uh, make sure it's tall, you know, there's up, up, up off the floor now.
That's a good, that's a good point, I have.
For that, al- unless you get a different, uh, table, you know, I know that was donated and whatnot, I mean, it's real, really nice, don't get me wrong, it's fantastic, but.
Yeah, I think we'd have to.
I would hate to get the bleachers in, and all of a sudden you cannot use that.
Yeah.
I know he looked at it and he said it would fit because our, the bleacher height is the same and how it slides over, but we did not look how those two legs slide under there.
Yeah, 'cause see, they had, they had to actually cut little mini doors for that flip open to get those.
I'll have to, I will double check, I'll have to call him tomorrow, so I'll check on that, that's a good point.
Is the visitor clearance the same as the home side as far as need or?
Um.
I couldn't, I couldn't tell.
We don't, we don't care about the visitors.
You're right.
It may not be.
I care about all of the people on homeboys land.
I thought they're in the same bleachers, just without chair backs.
Except the ones that sit on the visitors.
I see, it's, I don't.
I don't, I, I'm just, don't want it to be.
You're gay, it's crazy.
It may, I'm not, I'm not exactly sure.
I don't really care about that.
I think it said, if that's what that's talking about, I think that is twenty-four, it would have to be a little tighter, and that's to get five right there. But they don't have seat backs either, so.
Right, so they don't need as many.
Yeah, they're not gonna be as comfortable for sure.
That's all right.
That's probably has to be done to get five rows.
Yeah. Okay, color, this is what I care about the most, whether, how are we doing that?
Uh, uh, we said red, but that's whatever.
The only thing that made me think of it was last night, obviously, you could see when visitors looked, you could see D A W G S, dogs spelled out in the, and they got seats, could we get like O C or something spelled out, like we do in the middle school, has something like that.
Yeah, we talked, it would be, he, we talked about that, but it's, it would look funny due to the chair backs, the chair backs and the way they're.
Well, I think they used the chair backs as the spelling.
Right, but if you look at this, I mean, you could put an O and C right there, probably, but it's off-centered and it's,
But it's off-center, yeah.
it won't, it'll look a little hokey, maybe. Yeah, we actually talked about that, and he kinda said, I'm not, he didn't think, he didn't, he wasn't sure how that would look, work really very well. 'Cause we thought about putting, I, I always had envisioned he'd put O C H S in there or something, but I don't know, I can ask him again.
If I'm the only one that thinks it would look, I just think, give it a little character, what?
I mean, I can ask him.
Well, I mean, we're, we're deciding on something that could potentially last for forty more years, so I think it'd be kinda cool to have something on that, you know, design or maybe not need any, it's probably the same.
It's, it's, I don't, I don't know, all I'd have to, all I could do is ask him, I don't know what, it's gotta fit, you know, uh.
I'm just hoping that the seats are all whole, once we're able to go back to whatever the new normal is, and then, or whatever, really be able to see anyone. So that's, that's just my initial, uh, thought.
I can certainly, yeah, I can ask again, we did talk about it briefly, didn't, it didn't go very far when we were talking about it.
It's just a thought, it.
No, I don't think it's a bad thought, 'cause we know, I noticed that last night too.
Even if it's like that. Okay, you know what I mean, just like an O C.
Yeah, I can talk to him.
Dick, just give it a little bit of character, so it's not just this C of red, I mean.
I'll.
With white, I'm assuming.
Yeah, it would be with white.
Can you, we approve the bleachers without, and then just have to approve if there's a cost change?
I'd change the thought.
Uh, I don't know if it would change the cost, come on.
Where's your, where's your timing on this getting done and?
We have to get them ordered fairly quickly, I can't wait a month.
Oh, no, I mean.
If, if that's the, that was the whole thing with, um, obviously, it's gonna take time to get these in, and then I'm ramming three different projects into the gym this summer, but I think, I've talked to all three outfits that potentially would be doing this work, and they think it'll work.
So it's the HVAC, the bleachers and?
The floor.
And the floor, we decided after.
If you wanna go ahead with the gym.
Yep, I was curious about the delivery time, if it had June to September for the bleachers, is there any way that we can?
Uh, this is supposed to be done in before July twelfth, because that's when the floor people come in. I mean, I've talked to him about that extensively, so, so it's just if it's the board, if you're.
Tell them we'll approve it if they throw in some white seat backs for a O C.
I'll sure check on that.
It does say that they'll allow four to five weeks for approval drawings, so they're gonna expect to make some drawings or something on the site.
Uh, yeah, I don't know for sure about that, but you can't wait too long, or we won't have them here.
Oh, right.
So, I can sure check on that lettering, really.
So we make this motion, do we make it based upon with or without the drawing, how do you do that?
If, if, I guess, I just make it, make it, the motion to approve it and check on the drawing and make adjustments as needed. To, you know, it's not gonna cost very much to do that.
So should we put cap on the cost? I'm asking you guys to pipe this out, will you?
That's not gonna, I didn't, I'm not even sure it's.
I'd say it's a class zero.
I'm not even sure it's gonna be an additional cost, to be quite honest with you.
Let me talk to Brad.
I think it's a good idea, but if a platform costs thirty-three hundred dollars.
That's what I.
That makes no difference.
Really doesn't, he didn't say anything about extra cost, I don't know.
I mean, it's a red seat or a white seat, just like, so right over.
Yeah, I mean.
I'm really not sure if there's extra cost or no.
Oh, you're talking about just changing the seat back, though.
That's all you do, you're not add, it's not adding anything.
I don't, no, I don't think, I'm not sure it would cost any, if it does, it'd be minimal, I think, I don't think it'd be an extra.
It's not another platform.
Platforms are expensive, that's no doubt, he told us that. I, I'll check on the lettering.
I just think it'd add a little, break it up a little.
Yeah, my, my own confidence of, uh, to be able to get our, the money down on HVAC and be able to afford it.
I, I've been told, as long as it improves, here, here's the deal, they're not a crazy about everybody putting that first online uh, on this Esser money, it needs to go, like I said, they want it to go to kids and programs and stuff like that, but right in the, in the document, it talks about HVAC improvements and air quality and all that. So, I'll be honest, it, I'm like, uh, I got a little wet feet on the deal, hearing him say stuff like that, but I've been told, as long as it does that, it should get improved, approved now.
I'm concerned about this project, and if we, you know, commit the money, which we're, uh, going to make a motion for that tonight, we're committed to that, if, if something should happen and we don't get that money.
Right.
We get all this other line up right now, I mean, potentially.
We could, we could, we'll be able to handle it all, but the capital outlay fund will be lower than I'm comfortable with, because it'll, it'll be just, I, my estimation is it'll be just north of four hundred thousand if we finish all this. If we, if we get the Esser money to pay for the HVAC, we'll have six, north of six hundred thousand in the capital outlay.
We're still not through the pandemic situation either.
I'm s-
I'm concerned that we haven't made it through our pandemic year, and what, what potentially we might even be there.
Yeah.
I mean, is there something on bleachers, and I understand reading this, uh, timeline is where we need to make the decision now, but, uh, I mean, if we take.
If we're doing it this year, if we wanna put it off to a, I mean, that's up to the board too, I wasn't gonna do it this year, honestly. The only reason I threw it in this year is because of this, when I got that Esser money, and it said right on there HVAC improvements and, uh, I thought, well, let's do them both, you know?
How long when we know whether we're gonna get the Esser money is really applied for?
I can't answer that question, because there's an application process, and for this new money, they're gonna make us come up with a plan, and if that plan's approved, then we can move forward on things.
So, I'm asking a question here, how much money did it cost us by waiting to do the AC system?
Thirty-four thousand.
So how much money will it cost us if we're waiting here for this?
I'm kidding, answer that question.
I don't wanna hold back on a project again for thirty thousand dollars, we can get it done now, we have the money to do it now.
I mean, 'cause even with capital outlay.
Worst case scenario, we have to pay for it out of capital outlay, and the balance is low.
It's not depleted.
No, it's not.
It's just, uh, lower than we would want in all length, but.
And I, if, and I would say if, if, if we.
Didn't we put a little extra into that this year?
Uh, you know, we had some extra mills coming in, but my estimation, just looking at from last year, and where we, we should have over four hundred thousand, even if we bought all of this stuff, that, but the thing that you never know, just on the other side of that, is what else might come up that you have, that you don't expect to do.
And we've been pretty fortunate to get, you know, some of the money that government did COVID release, but anyways, what that's gonna be.
Any of the, this Esser money, anything that deals with COVID, the Esser money will be there for that, and you can write that in your plan.
Do you, what, what was the cap on that?
Uh, well, depend, what do you, what do you, are you talking about equipment or, or anything that's dealing with COVID as far as cost to dealing with anything that has to do with that, you, you can write that, and it'll get covered by the Esser two money. But if you're talking about just going out, they didn't like the idea of me buying a bus, I'll tell you that much.
But you're ninety percent sure that they're gonna pay the HVAC?
I am, it says it, I mean, if you look at the federal guidelines, it says it right in there.
Yeah, I don't know why we were, yeah.
I just.
So I think we're beating something up that's gonna get taken care of, that we're not.
I hope so, I hope so, I just, I can't give you a guarantee, if, I wish I could, but I can't.
Yeah, we can't guarantee the school's not gonna blow away more yet.
That's true.
Four trees.
On the, Troy, on the.
But I can say this, go ahead, Troy.
On the treasure courses, capital outlay balance is seven, seventy.
We have some more money coming.
And then if we spent four hundred thousand on all the projects, we would have more.
Then that's.
It would be under.
We have additional money that's supposed to be coming in a couple of weeks, and then county money that will come in at the end of the year too, that we haven't gotten yet.
Remind me what the four projects was around, four, eight, nine, oh, okay.
Twenty thousand, twenty thousand, seven, seven or something like that.
Oh, then.
We're talking about a hundred and ninety-five thousand.
I'm not overly concerned that even if we don't get to use the government money on HVAC, that, yeah, I don't think we should talk about it anymore, I think we need to vote on it, because I don't wanna waste money again waiting.
I'll make the motion that we approve a bid from Heartland City to replace the homeboy gym bleachers in the amount of one eighty-nine, two eighty For the bleachers, sixty-six eighty-six for the platforms, and ten forty, ten four thirty for the removal of the old bleachers for a total of. Two oh six, three ninety-six.
Second.
Aye.
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 Any bus, uh, we need to replace this bus, um, this is.
This is what we're gonna talk about for the last.
Yes.
The news.
It's a, it's, it's getting.
It's still running? Can't believe it's still running.
It's not a good bus, need to get rid of it, um, it now has a light that won't shut off, catalytic converter, it costs nineteen hundred dollars to fix it. It's not worth spending the money on, and, and honestly, when, when the other, when we talk about big buses lasting twenty-five years. These aren't built to last that long, it's just a van with a, so, uh, the, the bid, the low bid for Midwest Bus was fifty-nine, six seventeen. And they have that in stock, it wouldn't take nearly like the three months it takes on a usual bus purchase, so.
Did it tell you how long it took?
Uh, anywhere from, I'm gonna guess, between four and six weeks we could be using it. That, but that, we have to do our part, we have to get it insured, and we have to do all that stuff. I mean, that's a guess.
A lift or anything like that?
I did not put a lift in it, I feel like we have bus fifteen that has a lift, I don't think we need two lifts really, so.
I know we've talked about this several times, so, I don't wanna waste a lot of time, I'm, I'm gonna make the motion, we approve a little bit for Midwest Bus cells in the amount of fifty-nine, six seventeen to replace the district unit bus.
Second, aye.
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 Three Lakes report.
Hey, Three Lakes, uh. Some personnel changes were discussed, uh. Five pair positions were filled, uh, but three resigned and there were two terminations, so, it's still, uh, still a battle there. Uh, financial reports reviewed, revenue is up slightly due to S R and Sparks funding. The expenditures are down slightly due to T L E C spending the funds slowly, which is a good thing, I guess. Um. The board approved K S S B policy updates as recommended by T L E C. Uh, beginning in the twenty twenty-one, twenty twenty-two school year, a compliance document will be released regarding the dyslexia initiative. And from what I understand, that is mainly training for staff, is that correct, Troy, is that correct?
There's, oh, there's a lot to the dyslexia, yeah, it's training, it's gonna change a lot of what we do also, um. We're, we are gonna, we're supposed to finish that training up, uh, on Monday, but it's gonna. Require a lot of changes to how we do things with, uh, reading education, so. From nine through twelve, so it's, we just, we had a big session on that today, and it's, it's a, it's gonna be a big deal. Lot of effort's gonna have to go into that.
Um. Last thing to note, the board voted to accept Kathy Mickelson's retirement upon the conclusion of the twenty twenty-one, twenty twenty-two school year, so not this year, but next year. And, uh, she, she says that, uh, her, she's done thirty-five years and she's ready to. Take it easy, I guess, go down or do something else, I don't know, but, uh.
They should give us one more year.
Yeah, that's all I have for Three Lakes.
Thank you, our Grace report. Uh, we're doing youth basketball, uh, third, two, sixth grades started January twenty-third. Uh, we've, it's been going well, knock on wood. Uh, the school is allowing us to live stream the games in the middle school gym, which has been fantastic. Uh, Andy Lohmeyer told me that after the, on the first Saturday, there were six hundred and eighty-five live views for that day.
That's awesome.
And then fifty, uh, post, uh, views meeting that after the games were done, they watched, they watched you. So over seven hundred views total for the first weekend, so. Uh, we are com- uh, currently, uh, using the CAECA guidelines with the number of fans. Uh, Osage City, Linden, uh, Santa Fe Trail, and Hartford all allow four fans per, per player. Uh, Olpe is still at two fans per player, and Americas does a total attendance. It cannot go over a certain number, uh, total in that gym, which it, it's a number that won't be a problem, so. But everybody's really good, the parents come and check in at, in cafeteria doors and, and it's, it's worked really well, so. Uh, our final Saturday is supposed to be February twenty-seventh. Uh, cable, uh. Lucas' boss has got his work cut out for him this year. Uh, it, there's fifty total kids, twenty-five preschool, twenty-five kindergarteners. And man, that's a lot of kids, a lot of little kids. Uh, tons of parents are helping out, which is fantastic, uh, we are limiting attendance to two, uh, per, per player. And because if we did four, it would just be insane, the amount of people. Again, everybody's been really good, um, I mean, understanding, it's, it's really ran really well. Uh, first, second grade basketball, similar, uh, there's eighteen first and second grade boys and eighteen first and second grade girls, so thirty-six total. Boys are in the elementary gym, the girls are in the middle school gym, and we also limit them to two, uh, parent guardian to, per player, so. Um, and Natasha Jenkins and Kelsey Kujer and a couple other parents are doing, handling the boys section, and then Lucas and. Uh, Tim, I think you're involved, and then I think one other, maybe one other parent, so.
Kate.
Kate, oh yeah, Kate's in there, so. Um, but yeah, that's going really well too, and having them both on Sunday has been nice, uh, Super Bowl Sunday, we played them or did those earlier in the afternoon. Uh, to make sure that they got. Um, I am currently talking with Kathy Camarena about Dance Camp Clinic, uh, in March, probably after spring break. And then do a performance, uh, recital in the auditorium, so that's in the works. Uh, spoke in the spring, uh, as of January twenty-first, I was at a hundred and four teams. Um, I now have a hundred and four teams plus twelve teams on a waiting list. Uh, there was a, a contest opposite us in Smithville, Missouri, and last week they canceled. So that created some extra interest in our event, so. Uh, but everything else for it's still going, um, I'll probably decide about the public community stuff around St. Patrick's Day. And, uh, hopefully we'll, we'll still have the contest, and then we'll just see what happens with all the community stuff. Um. And then, uh, at the Skendering Building, uh, Gary Thompson and his staff, uh, replaced the large garage door. Uh, the one that had been there is as old as the building, and. The new one is remote control, which is great, and it really closes them tight, everything's really, uh, well done with it, so. He, it was about a day and a half, uh, project for him, so. And then, uh, my first, uh. Uh, meeting with the KCBS Board of Directors, it's very worth it, so. Uh, that's been quite a, quite a fun month so far, so. That's about it.
Thank you, Senator of Reports.
I'll go ahead and go, um, the Osage City Tree Board recently, um, hosted their poster contest, their. And, uh, for Arbor Day, and these were the winners, in first place was Kinsey Bellinger, second place Matty Heffensall, third place Kyla Davidson. And honorable mention went to Connor Harsh, and all of those students are fifth graders, so. Um, I'm not sure what happened with Kinsey's poster, I think Mrs. Webster ended up taking it up to Manhattan, and we haven't heard on the news from there. Uh, Jackson Ballard, a fourth grade student, um, placed fourth in our Osage City Spelling Bee, and I wanna highlight him because. Fourth grade is where the spellers actually start spelling, and for him to place fourth among sixth, seventh, and eighth graders, I thought was really, um. Honorable for him, and it shows that he, he really took that, uh, contest to heart, so I was really proud of him. Uh, Mrs. Keith is hosting kindness week next week in the elementary school. Um, we have an in-service day on Monday, so they won't do really anything on Monday, but Tuesday is be kind to yourself. Uh, Wednesday is be kind to your parents, so there you guys go. Um, Thursday is be kind to your teachers, and Friday is to be kind to your classmates, and students are gonna be doing different activities throughout the class. Or throughout the week in their classrooms, and the elementary school, we do this instead of Red Ribbon Week. Um, we think kindness is a little bit more pertinent in our area versus Red Ribbon Week. Um, wanna thank Colleen Stuckey, Jesse Kirkpatrick, and Kylie Lohmeyer, we are honoring Black History Month this, um, month. In the month of February in the elementary school, um, they have actually prepared posters. That are, um, recognizing, um, and highlighting famous African Americans in our building. And then on Fridays, fifth graders are highlighting a couple of those African Americans by talking over the intercom and giving us famous facts. About cer- certain ones, so, um, excited about that for this month, and that's all I have.
Uh, for the middle school, uh, Mrs. Paul did a great job hosting our spelling bee this year, our district spelling bee on January twentieth. Uh, Lucas Gantbind finishing first, Brayden Bowen in second, and Carolina White was in third, so. Lucas and Brayden went over to Burlingame for the county one, and Lucas finished in second place. So he will be the alternate for Osage County, and Kansas State Spelling Bee this year's at Wichita at Newman University, and that's on March twenty-seventh, so. Something happens to the, the champion, he'll, he'll be getting the trip to Newman. Um, Student Council, they're working on their winter door blocker this year, we've done it every year since I've been here, I believe. Uh, collecting the food items for Ecat, um, we'll have our incentive this Friday, February nineteenth, they'll get snowed in their classroom, we'll do a movie. Usually we do treats and other stuff, but be a little different this year with COVID, so, and it'll probably be pretty cold that day. Um, Quiz Bowl, we've got two meets under our belts, and all our Quiz Bowl meets this year are virtual, uh, we got. It's crazy that we got snowed out from a virtual Quiz Bowl meet, but that happened on Monday, or pulled out. Uh, so, we postponed that, and that'll be on Tuesday next week, uh, weather permitting. And, uh, then we'll have a couple more at Northland County, uh, Mission Valley, and West Frankl, and we'll host league on March first. And then track practice, weather permitting, will start March eighth, and we got a virtual parent meeting that night in the middle school gym, so. So I have the middle school.
I'm not thinking about track yet, I could get basketball and wrestling over, so, um. Wrestling is in postseason now, so, um, they last weekend had what would be districts, so they busted postseason up a lot different. Instead of having all out at Hayes in a two-day period, they really broke it up, so Friday they go to Rossville. For, we have seven wrestlers going up for regional, and then the, that's Friday, the following Saturday, a week following. They go to Marion for substate, and that was really like the first round out at Hayes. So they'll do that at Marion, and then if they advance there, then they'll go out to Hayes for state championship only on that Saturday. Um, February twenty-seventh, so wrestling is coming to a, a close, and, um, still three weeks out, but still getting into their postseason. Basketball has gone well, um, we did open up to four, two parents plus two guests for our home games, for our home crowd. But our visitors, we still kept at two, and that's because of our visitor side, even when San, uh, Santa Fe Trail came over. We had to sit some over on the home side, cause there just still wasn't room over there for them to do that. Uh, the crowd size got a little crowded when the girls' game was still happening, and the boys' crowd started showing up. And they wanted to come in the gym, they came in, and it got pretty, I mean, it was pretty full. But once the girls' game got over, the girls' crowd left and we were good again, so there was probably two quarters there, quarter and a half, that was. More crowded than it should have been, so, um. We only have two home games left, um, we were supposed to play Olpe on Friday, which was King and Queen of Courts. We did move that to February, um, twenty-second, they didn't wanna come in the cold and the snowy, so. We did move Queen of Courts, so we'll play Olpe Monday night and Lebo on Tuesday night, back to back, so I have two games there. Um.
Well, one of those games still be Queen of Courts?
What's that?
It's one's Queen of Courts.
Queen of Courts would be the twenty-second, and then senior night will be twenty-third the following night. Um. And then we have some other shuffling around, some games, trying to get things in and, and just keep track of the activities page, cause it changes by the hour, it seems like. A lot going on.
It's been really great, so.
Yeah, it, it has been good, I, I mean, we've been fortunate, we, um, currently have eighteen games on our schedule, and a lot of these teams that we're playing, like Rossville. They had eleven on their record, eleven games total. Um, Council Grove, I think they're at eight games now, so we've been very fortunate to play as many games as we've had. Um, and I, hats off to the coaches and staff doing a good job keeping things clean and safe, so that, that's been a good thing. Substate basketball will be at Council Grove the first week of March, um, more than likely, we're gonna host Monday night with the girls and Tuesday night with the boys, and those will be single games. So, um. We'll probably allow four per, per team participant, cause you don't have all the JV and C teams and everything, so it'll be just the twelve tournament players. So we'll do four, and I think CAECA wants us to do equal for home and away, uh, teams, so. That'll be Monday, Tuesday, and then Thursday, Friday, Saturday be at Council Grove. Um, obviously, anytime you lose one of those games, your season's done, so, uh, hope for the, the best, and kids do a good job. Um. State basketball's gonna loo- look a little different as well the following week, so instead of playing it all out at Hayes or Hutch. Um, Monday and Tuesday, we will ho- or the top seeds will host as well. So, instead of maybe playing a three A school in Western Kansas, they mashed up two substates. So we, we're in substate five, we would play the winner of substate six, and so whoever's the higher seed. That's the site that you'll go to on that Monday night, girls would play Monday night, and then the boys play Tuesday night. And then from there on, um, you would go out to Hutch if you win to play, um, the semifinals. And then court, and then the championship on Saturday, there'll be no third place games this year, um, if you, you lose, you're done. Um, so they, they will not have a third place game, just championship games on that Saturday. So it'll basically not require us to dismiss school, they're not letting traditional student body groups there as well. So we're not gonna be able to take a large band or take a large pep bus or anything like that, so. Um, state will be a little bit different, but hopefully we get it in, last year we quit after the first round, so. Um, on Wednesday, February seventeenth, the high school's going to have a, uh, social emotional day or mental wellness day. Mental health wellness day, um, Mrs. Camarena's done a fabulous job, um, she's really made a good day out of it, uh, I think it'll be a fun day. Um, we'll have a keynote speaker with all the students in the auditorium for an hour. And this keynote speaker's gonna talk about the importance of mental health and keeping mentally healthy and, and, uh, how you do that. And then throughout the day, there's gonna be breakout sessions, students got a signup sheet. Where stu- they could sign up for their top ten, and then we kinda divided them out for the breakout sessions to go some, uh, different places. So some of the topics are stress and anxiety management, uh, sleep and how it affects you, um, human trafficking, psychology of social media. Yoga and mindful, mindfulness, and some of these are virtual, and some of them are in-person people. Uh, worked with K S, K S D E, Kent Reed really hooked us up with some good speakers and some people to come in. And so, um, Kelly Hurla, the, um, social worker through Three Lakes, and she was Three Lakes, or she was the county?
She's with, uh, Osage County Drug Free.
Um, kinda helped Kathy with some of this, so, um, I think it'll be a good day, um, we are going to. Close the lunches for all the kids, and they're gonna have a sack lunch and enjoy it in the classroom and, and then get on to our next sessions. Um, so, um, looking forward to it, I, I, a lot of work has gone into it, and Kathy's done a fabulous job in. Uh, getting this all out and getting it ready, so looking forward to that day. If you are feeling like you need some mental health, come in that day, enjoy some sessions with us. And there are some sessions just for teachers too, so they, they'll, it's, I, I think it's gonna be a really great day. Um. We have thirty-two boys that showed up to our baseball interest meeting, and that's going to probably. And that's going to probably cause me to ask for a third baseball coach. Um, we have had one over a couple different times. And what I would like to do with that is is offer that position to somebody. I'm not even, who was the the gentleman at the elementary para that was interested?
Anthony Wonder.
Anthony. Um, so we have a a gentleman that's interested and has some coaching background and experience. Um, but um, I'd like to do that and then get the season up to our first game. Our numbers hold, then put him on contract, otherwise pay him by the hour. We kind of have done that before with these number coaches. So if that's okay with you, I'd like to to do that with our baseball numbers being so high.
What was that?
What's his name? Um, Anthony Wonder. It's W U N D E R.
And I haven't opened it at all. I have not talked to anybody. I haven't even talked to him. He's, I, he's just a name that has come up.
So you just want to know if you can open this up. When does baseball season start?
Uh, first of March.
So you need to have approval to go ahead and hire whoever?
That's what I'm asking for, yeah. To open it and then do the hourly thing, and then probably, I don't know.
Are you gonna put it back at the March board meeting?
Probably the March board meeting. I won't have a game until after spring break, so I won't know really.
The high school or the basketball players technically aren't for practicing.
Yeah, yeah. It might not even be till the April board meeting that I asked for full-time, but unless you give me the approval of the numbers hold and and transfer that over. But, so I'd like to do that third coach if if you'd approve that.
Do we need a motion for that, George?
Yeah, I'd make a motion to open that if possible.
So I'd make a motion, we open up for possibly having a third baseball coach based on the numbers.
Hi.
Hi.
Doc.
Hi.
My name?
Hi.
Hi.
Thank you.
David, did you second that?
Would you hold on for a minute?
Yes, thank you.
Thank you. We're making a motion, we're gonna ask him this though.
I do have a follow-up question though for each one of you. I know that the latest quarantine update we had was maybe from last Friday. How are each one of you feeling from a staff level? Is everything going okay with COVID and quarantine right now?
Ever. I don't think I have any staff that are in quarantine unless it may be a para or a custodian.
Okay.
But other than that, I think my staff feels more comfortable in what they did in Dec- December. I I I think that they are a little bit more relaxed. I think part of it is because we've got, a lot of us got the first vaccine. A lot of the hype of COVID is starting to kind of be on the downfall in the state of Kansas. Um, but yeah, and from a student standpoint, I think I have eleven right now that are in quarantine, but probably half of those will come back this week.
Okay.
So we have a leadership team tonight, and we're just really excited about our members in the elementary school for COVID reasons anyhow.
And I would echo the same thing. I mean, we're full staff and few students. I could even, not very many at all. Um, if any, I'm not even sure I have any in quarantine right now, so um, it's, we're doing well.
Middle school staff got, had staff number get back this week, so we're full go, and we only have a couple on quarantine right now. But I, you know, it go up for a couple days and come right back down, so it's it's a fluctuation, but I think everyone's a lot more comfortable with it now. We've, we've got our sys- system down pretty good. I think everyone's, I mean, the students are doing a great job as well as the teachers handling it. So they know, they know what they need to do if they are gone, and they're doing a great job, job with it.
I will say, I think all the staff would say, thank you so much for those three days. The last day was just so, I, you can almost just feel a, ah, I'm so glad I can get so much work done. Kind of an atmosphere, at least in my building. I think all of you are very thankful for that, and I would bet you guys would say the same thing to it. I also wanna recognize Lisa Kretal and Cassidy Powell. They have done a fantastic job keeping everybody safe as safe as possible and keeping everybody informed about COVID and vaccines and just all the information that's out there.
Those two have done fabulous job.
Um, I think we're very thankful for both of them.
Good, glad to hear it.
One, one thing that I'll add to to Dean on that, we with the vaccines coming up the second round, we've tried to hot, kinda line up. Uh, we we do that on the twenty-third and the twenty-fifth, I believe, for the second round vaccines. We've got some subs kind of on on the, in hold. Because just in case some of them have uh, you know, reactions and don't feel well the next day or so. So we're trying to prep for that a little bit, not, hopefully, we don't have to deal with too much of that, but trying to be ready and proactive on it, so.
I would move on to executive session to discuss a student, student discipline issue pursuant pursuant to the exception relating to actions of personally for favorably affecting a student matter under comment, and the open meeting will resume in the boardroom at, you got eight oh five is the time?
Yeah, eight ten.
So eight ten, with the administration be present.
Second, aye.
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 Aye.